Any oral communications? Okay. So we'll move on to the minutes. Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mine says refresh, so does Frances.
Oh, click on refresh.
Oh, click on refresh? Okay. Hey. Okay.
So we approve 4-0, cut it off.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to library programming feasibility discussion. Is that Mayor, is that Mayor Bell?
Yeah, we had penned this conversation to this meeting. I'm not sure, I guess now if it would make more sense to wait for Reno to be instated, or who we would need to bring the conversation to in terms of the cost, because I think it would not be feasible for us to be able to replicate this program ourselves. At the very least, I think it would be great to reach out to the coordinator of the Fix-It Clinics and maybe have a couple workshops here in Escondido, and then from there kind of gauge what the interest level is.
Dan, did you have any opportunity to research this?
I have not had an opportunity yet, but what I was going to suggest, if we happen to know who the contact information is for the Fix-It Clinics, I can give it to our adult services principal librarian to reach out and start a conversation.
I do have a card, I think I left it in my cart, but I can get that information to you, the person in charge of figuring out those workshops.
Yeah, the workshops to me sound like a really excellent and awesome thing, so I want to see us take steps towards those.
Yeah, and then just I do want to make sure that it's noted that they had said that sometimes involving public works can help offset some of those costs. So I will give that contact information to Dan, and then I think we'll just have a follow-up on how that follow-up goes.
Sure, yeah, I think we'll be able to get him, get contact within the next month, well prior to the next friends, pardon me, Library Board of Trustees meeting, and I can have Reno bring you an update.
Okay, sounds good.
Oh, we're talking an update on both the Fix-It and the Seeds Library?
Just the Fix-It Clinic right now. Seed Library, I think we've done that technically in the past, there was some monthly display that was done, but let me dig back and get more information for you on that.
Okay, so can you pass that on to Reno for next meeting then?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and then for the Seed Library, so those were two separate programs, the Seed Library from Carlsbad, I think was just something that they had in-house, and it did look like they had a permanent display there where they had the seeds, a little bit of information about that. I will add that they, it seemed that they had partnered with a local farmer or nursery that would help provide those seeds. I'm not sure if there was a cost associated with that, so I know, Virginia, you had mentioned about wanting to donate some seeds, so I think that's one of the avenues that we can explore that, as well as potentially partnering with any local farmers to kind of build a little bit more of that community connection.
And that was Carolyn that wanted to donate the heirloom tomatoes, because I was like, wait, I don't garden, it was Carolyn.
It was Carolyn.
And I know the lady who runs the farm stand down Miller and 15, and I can ask her what she thinks and where we ought to be looking as well.
I see the note here, this is a question for you, Dan, says, "Discussion may include additional programming ideas." Someone reached out and said that there was other libraries outside of Escondido that were celebrating the eclipse, or doing like watch parties for the eclipse. Do you know if anything's on the docket for Escondido?
So yes, what we have going on, we've got, we're not going to make the eclipse this year because of what is happening, but we have glasses that we put in for, for next year, there's going to be another eclipse that I believe in April and October, so we're planning programming around that.
Okay.
But not for this year, it just kind of snuck up on us, and someone mentioned, hey, there's an eclipse coming, what now? So we knew about the glasses, so we started to jump ahead and get ready for next year. So it's pretty cool, we'll be able to hand out glasses and have programming around that for all ages.
I know the Fix-It Clinic cost and any other cost will be talked about in the future with Reno, but I'm just curious if we are able to use the grant funds to support this, do you know, John?
I don't know about grants, but we could look at using, potentially using trust funds. I believe one of the trust accounts is kind of a catch-all, and this would go under, you know, education and all that, so.
Okay, so we'll add that to the November agenda. Next item is Library Director Subcommittee Discussion, which I believe is John.
Okay, well, I was hoping that Jennifer Shennett could make this meeting, but I don't know. Something about having an under-two and an under-four-year-old at six o'clock at night, I don't know. Well, I think what, well, my thought, pardon me, my thought was, because I know a couple of us have brought this up, it's not my idea, I don't think. Let's have a subcommittee of two to be nominated by the then-president of the Library Board of Trustees when there is a candidate for the Library Director position. And that that subcommittee would interview the Library Director candidate or candidates in advance of a Library Board meeting, and bring their results to the rest of the board, and for the board to have a discussion, and potentially ask the candidate more questions and vote on it. And my reasoning is, city has their position that they've now enforced on us twice, city controls the LNS/SNS contracts, so they're not going to say anything about it one way or the other. But we are, we are appointed by the elected officials of the city, and to do our jobs right, we need to conduct a proper interview, this being the most important position in the library. And I think that's the way it should be, and hopefully the city will agree, and we can pursue other avenues if they don't. So that's, that's just my thoughts. Well, this, we only need a subcommittee if and when there's another Library Director candidate, we've, you know, Reno's showing up Monday, I don't know if he's still driving through Texas now or what. Oh, good. So I made that drive, it's terrible, so, especially this time of year. So it's not anything that's going to come up soon, I just want to make sure that it's an established procedure that both city and the Library Board will follow in the future. Well, but what we need, in my opinion, what we need is to have the city agree to this, if they don't agree to this, we're wasting our time. And if they don't, the city won't agree to enable the Library Board to have that subcommittee. I mean, we'll appoint the president, this is hopefully several years from now, the then-president of the Library Board of Trustees will appoint two people from, two trustees to, on the subcommittee, and go through the process I talked about, and we want the city to agree to that. Well, okay, but it doesn't matter if we have a subcommittee, if the city won't let us, the city blocked us from doing the interview this year.
It doesn't matter to get the city's approval right now, because in the future it might be a different city person who's representing the board, so I think that we should move forward with motioning to have this subcommittee, so that it's in, so the board is taken care of on the stance.
Okay, but if we put it in city procedures, they're more than likely to follow them in the future versus if we don't. No, but it does no, does us no good to form one if the city blocks us again from interviewing the candidate on our own.
So I think what John is saying is like, we'd have the subcommittee, right, forming the subcommittee is not the issue, I think we would all want that in the event years down the road, right, that we're in this situation again. But the point of the subcommittee is going to become null if we don't get the opportunity to interview the candidates before it becomes, it comes to the full Board of Trustees to vote on.
Yeah, because if we have a precedent where the current city manager approves this process for future Library Director candidates, then a new city manager could change that, but they'd be more than likely to stick with the procedure that's on the books.
So how do we get that?
That, so how do we get that on the books and get an agreement by the city? And if it's needed to go to City Council to have them tell the city what to do, we'd be glad to do that.
So it sounds like we need a subcommittee to be the advocating party to go about this, but you were going to say Frances?
That's what I was just going to say, we should just vote to form the subcommittee, and then dive in and figure out if it's already part of procedure within the city, and then advocate for it to be on the City Council agenda.
Well, I'm fine with, if you guys want to, you know, if you want to vote on that, that's, and have a subcommittee to come back with a recommendation to us, to go back to city, but whatever you want to do.
We vote on it next meeting when Carolyn's back, and then also I have a meeting individually with the mayor on Monday, he just wants to know how he could support us and if we need anything, so I'll bring up this topic with him.
I think that's a great idea.
Yes. Sounds good.
And then is it possible to add on to this, and again, I think it might be maybe a next month conversation, Dan, I'm not, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but how were you or the library staff involved in this process too? Because I believe that, you know, since you will be reporting to the director, I believe that staff should be involved to some capacity with this process, so I think that's something that we would want to consider when the subcommittee is pursuing this conversation.
Sure, so I can tell you how it's worked when I've been at the library for the last few years, I've been through about four directors at this point. About less of them all, that's a joke. But usually when they bring in a new director, they have a chance to have the director meet the staff, to see if it's going to be a good fit both ways. So I would say if there had been a director that came in that didn't get along with the staff, we'd be moving on to having a conversation about bringing someone else in, so there's always a, depending on where they come, they come up for a couple of days, meet with staff, ask questions, see if they like it, so there is that part of the staff involvement. But we don't get to say like, yeah, interview that person, or interview that person, it's once it gets to a final stage of who they might be considering.
Okay, thank you, John. Let's see, we'll move on to library statistics for August.
I figured out how to get the three months on the page.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. So yeah, June, July, August, we had a pretty good summer this year. One key point I wanted to mark, point out, was the number of website visits has been marked as TBD for the last three months. What happened is we used Google Analytics to figure out website visits, but there was some sort of change over in the protocol, June 1st, that I didn't learn of until late August, and no idea what the steps are to bring it about to get the website's stats tracked again, so it's one of those, we're working to figure it out, but I don't have an end date of when that will be.
So Dan, this is not a function that comes off of Polaris?
It is not, it's something we had to specifically sign up for through a Google account that we could get the stats for if website visits and library card, pardon me, not library card, library catalog uses.
Okay, so does somebody have to go take Katie out to lunch to find out how to do it, or what?
It's, she, it may not even be one she knows how to do, because it was something that changed on the Google side of things, it was like a protocol thing.
Okay.
Reno is pretty tech savvy, so I've been kind of waiting for him to get here and go a little bit more depth into what the issue is, that way we can figure out next steps. But if worse comes to worse, we'll reach out to Katie and say, hey! But yeah, usual, pretty good stats, we had a little bit of dip in August because we wrapped up our summer reading program, that's why you see a little bit less there, but we did have seven outreach programs where we made it out to the schools for back-to-school nights, reading nights, and I think we even did a, oh no, that's in September, so we'll speak to that next month, but we had a lot of opportunities to go out and promote the library to the schools. And if you have any other questions about the stats, I'm more than happy to answer.
I'm guessing the live offsite program attendance going up is because of the school visits?
Correct.
Got it.
Other questions?
So the statistics look like they're moving, you know, with variation what you would expect for the interlibrary loans, but any comments on how that program's going, the LINK program?
LINK Plus has been very, very successful for us, we're getting a lot of use out of it, I think we're seeing about, I'm looking at the numbers here, where does that go? Yeah, we're averaging about 300 items that we get, and then about 300 or so items that we send out each month, I think that's been going on, I want to say the last six months, eight months off the top of my head, but we've got, I will say this, doing the LINK Plus has increased the number of interlibrary loans we are able to do, and people are quite happy with it, so we, new people are finding it all the time. And I know that we have somewhere on the schedule for customer service in the Pioneer Room to do an update in the later months, so Aspen Hill, that helps oversee that program, can speak more to that when she's here, and give you a bit more in-depth.
Okay, so a lot of the LINK comes out of the Pioneer Room? LINK activity?
Aspen oversees the customer service and the Pioneer Room, so she does both.
Ah, okay.
LINK Plus comes out of more like reference customer service.
So is it filling any, you know, any collection process is an art, you know, trying to guess what books are going to be used, so does this allow you to fill some holes that normally occur in the collection process?
It can, sometimes, yeah, sometimes folks will have very specific, hard-to-find books that only one library has, so in this case, it's been very useful, sometimes we have college students that need a particular textbook, so we're able to get them through this process as well, so it's been really handy.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to the strategic plan.
Okay, so we are still for, we are discussing the Embrace Emerging Services of the Strategic Plan. For the Educate Residences, about modern library services, still for fiscal year '23 through '27, two monthly e-news letters about programs, services, and events are going out, as well as to social media. I do believe we're still on track for the purchasing of envelopes that promote the library to go out with the water bills sent from the city, but I was unable to find any data on that, so I'll make sure to follow up with the team, and Reno can hopefully bring an update on that in recent upcoming months.
Is the city still use that service in Orange County to send out the water bills?
No, I don't have an answer of that, I don't know.
Okay. Because it would, before in years past, when the city sent out the bills locally, they had somebody stuff the envelopes and somebody else, they subcontracted all that out, and so the mailers could be put in that, and then when it went up to Orange County, that kind of disappeared.
Oh, okay, so I was unaware of that.
Yeah, so.
I'll check in on that.
Okay.
I appreciate the heads up. I'm just going to make a note. Okay, jumping down over to encourage reading, the adjust collection budget to meet specific community needs, we're ongoing with our collection development, library IQ analytics data has been very useful in that, and then to move down to celebrate reading throughout the year by offering one reading program challenge in addition to the summer reading. We have nothing in plan for late, right now, 2023 for a challenge, but we do have our In-N-Out Cover-to-Cover Book Club that we run every year from October 7th through November 18th, that's for ages four to 12, we've been, that's been a program for the last 20 years at multiple libraries, and then I'll be looking to see about doing a winter challenge in probably 2024 to see what the feasibility is, we've done them in the past, and we've had mild success with that, I think it just kind of depends.
I have one question on the library IQ, which I'm a big fan of. If I remember correctly, most of the collection decisions are now made at LNS, like 80% or something like that?
Yeah, it shifts, depends on the collection, about 75, 80 depends.
Yeah, so are both the LNS, LNS Collection Team and EPL using analytics, or just them?
Everyone uses the analytics, because it gives us a good idea of how things look. We also use the analytics to determine if a book is circulating or not, how well it's checking out, and that helps us inform our local collection development as well.
Okay, thanks.
Plus purchase requests, it's a great system. All right, moving on. To support early literacy and education, I checked the numbers for our 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten since the last update on this, and we now currently have 800 registered participants in that program, which is offered throughout the year. Do I need to explain what a 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten is, is that pretty, does everyone know what that is? Okay, cool. It's very rare that I meet someone that does not know what that is, so I always like to ask just in case. And then, oop, I missed the month that comes out, but we down on other services offered beyond the library, leveraging city parks and rec, we do participate in the rec guide every year to promote library programming, and then summer 2023, the city donated pool passes, which were great, and we're looking forward to doing that in 2024 as well. And then that's everything that I've got for the update on the goals and objectives this time around.
The Director's Report.
All right, okay, so as you got an email on Monday, Reno, Landa will be starting at Escondido on Monday, October 16th, we're all excited to get him here. We also have two new librarians that started with the library, we have a new adult services librarian, her name is Diamond Toronto, that is not spelled right on my paper, T-A-R-N-T-O, I believe, is her last name, Toronto. She's fresh from library school, graduated in June, this is her first library job, very, very excited to be with the team, she's about a week and a half into the position, and just excited, has already bonded with the adult services team and the youth services team, going to be a great fit, and she's got a lot of fun library program ideas, we're going to hopefully be reporting back on within the next six months or so. And then we also have Amy Villanueva, who is our new children's librarian in youth services, we were able to promote from the inside, she was a part-time library associate too in the adult services library department, and she's just about to finish with her degree in December, and has an interest in children's development and being a children's librarian, so it just happened to work out fantastically, she's been in the job four days, and the kids already love her. She went over to, we do a monthly storytime at the San Diego Children's Discovery Museum, Evelyn, my staff took her over there to get her used to it, the staff at the museum saw Diamond for, pardon me, Amy for the first time, looked at her and said, "You're just so great, if you're ever looking for a job, we'll hire you here." Evelyn said, "No, we just got her, she's ours." So just the vibe and energy she has for working with kids already exudes itself, so we're very excited to have her with us and see what she's going to come up with. And then, John, you had asked a question last month, at last meeting, about the total patron, registered library cards, I did some research into that, so how it's broken down, we have active cards and inactive cards, active cards are considered unexpired, and the current total for those is 3,287, inactive cards are considered expired, at the current total of 54,503. These cards usually expire after about three years of non-use, or even if they're being used, they expired, gives us an opportunity to update the information, emails, addresses, things like that, so we have the proper contact information, so the number on this changes month to month. I do know that the library, I don't know if it's once a year or once every couple of years, will get rid of those expired cards that have not been renewed, so we have more accurate numbers.
Okay, thanks for that, so how, what's the time span a card is considered current?
A current library card was, is within three years of the date that they register for the card, so today, a card could be active, but if they registered in 2020, tomorrow it would be considered expired, so next time they come in and scan the card, gives us an opportunity to verify they have the correct information in there, and then it becomes unexpired and using, being used again, from expired to unexpired. It's kind of internal terminology.
Do you know how much activity takes place month to month, where you have people going to expire and coming back from it?
So the only way I could get that data is if I compared month to month, and then we could get you a better idea of that, I just.
I don't know if it's important.
Yeah, it'd be certainly fascinating to see, I will say, anecdotally, just from personal. Yeah, it'd be certainly fascinating to see. I will say, anecdotally, just from personal experience there, when we have summer starting, we have a whole bunch of library cards that expired. So we have a lot of families renewing their cards. So maybe 500, a thousand during the summer towards the beginning of it. Again, that's just at a guess off the top of my head, not hard data, but it's hard to, just depends on how often people come in and use the library.
Question for you.
Sure.
So what is the process of reactivating the card look like? Um, for me, one of the biggest concerns about not being a barrier to returning to the library is how hard that is, right? And for us, it may be only like 10 minutes, right? But for some families that, that may be a deterrent.
Frankly, three minutes at most. It's literally. So here's your library card. Great. Here's your information. Let's take a look. Does this all look accurate? Fantastic. Your card is good to go. This phone number is out of date. Here, let's just update that real quick. Your card is good to go.
So, so let's say, you know, it's been three years. I haven't been to the library. I have my physical library card. I know the library has like those self-checkout machines, right? So I try to go and scan it. If it's expired, what's going to happen?
So what's going to happen is it will say your card is not working or please see the desk. So the computer directs them over, say if it's upstairs, youth services department, we can see the card real quick. If it's not active, we'll give them a library card application. Five minute process to fill it out, go downstairs, get it reactivated. So maybe 10 minutes at most. It just kind of depends situation to situation. If they are unable to get the library card application filled out that day, they can come back another date. I do believe customer service also will do like a quick add feature just to get them in the system really quick so they can get checked out and then go back and put the rest of the information in later. We try to make it as fast and easy as possible.
Okay. Is there the possibility to implement that within the self-checkout machine where like that information pops up and it's kind of like a, oh, oh, like it's been a while. Can you confirm this information?
I don't know that that's a possibility because they're two completely different systems talking to each other, but I can certainly ask and recommend that.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, our antisocial individuals who, you know, will just never mind, forget about it, right?
For sure.
And also perhaps, you know, some of our Spanish speaking communities where they're like, you know what? I don't feel comfortable going to the desk because I'm not fluent in English, even though our staff maybe, right? But sometimes they just assume. And I don't, definitely don't want that to be a barrier to them.
Absolutely.
And then secondary question from there is I'm not sure what the policies are on retaining contact information for those that have lapsed those three years. But I would be interested in exploring opportunities to reach out to those 50,000 folks and just kind of be like, hey, you haven't visited us in a while, you know, like can we entice you with this program or whatever? Again, I don't know the policies on doing that.
There's, there's a lot of rules around patron privacy. So I think we have to approach that carefully, but again, I think it's something we can certainly explore. When they do sign up for a library card, they are put on to an I, library newsletter that we send out and that goes to several thousand off the top of my head. So one option we might do is saying, hey, if your library card is expired, we want you to come back in our next newsletter to encourage them to come in and renew. So that might be an option. But yeah, I'll make a note to bring that up with Reno and see what we can do too.
For the newsletter idea, is it possible to see also or report back on subscribers, unsubscribed on the newsletter itself?
Yep, absolutely. Be with me here. I just want to make sure I got all my notes perfect. Okay, got those. And then finally, just wanted to let you all know that the library will be hosting our annual Dia de los Muertos celebration on Thursday, November 2nd from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM. We do, I had spoken to it about last time, but it's a big celebration of Dia de los Muertos with a story and ofrenda altar that we put in the front lobby. We have a song. Mrs. Garcia does a story craft and just really celebrates it. I want to invite the board to come and attend the event so you can see what we do with that and participate in the ofrenda. Usually goes up about a week before the event and then up, up about a week or two after the event as well. So five, four o'clock on a Thursday, I know might be a little hard, but would love to have you there to see what we do.
That might be fun.
Mrs. Garcia really makes it fun and we get a lot of good food too.
Oh, okay. Now, now we're talking. So any reason it's on the second instead of the first?
We, that's usually, we decided to do it on the second because Dia de los Muertos is usually on the 31st, the first or the second. We're doing it on the second because Wednesday is traditionally Mrs. Garcia's day off where she's taking care of six grandkids. And we said, you pick the day you want to do it and we'll do it. So we're still within the timeframe.
Glad you're doing it on the second because the first, the Arts Center is doing a big event that we're going to. So now I have two days.
Oh, perfect. Yeah. And I think that may, that now that you mentioned that, I think that was the other reason we decided on the second because we knew the center was going to be doing it as well. There, there was another reason in there. So excellent. And that basically wraps up my director's report for this time around and yeah, again, thank you for everything. I love your questions because it gives us different ways to think, oh yeah, that's a good idea. Well, let's see why we aren't doing that. So I do appreciate your involvement.
Thank you. We appreciate your support over the past few months. I do have a question for you. What is the, is what's going on with Katie's previous position?
So they had decided they were going to put a hold on that until they got a new library director in place so that they would have a say in who the new assistant library director would be.
Okay.
Which made sense.
There is plans to refill it?
I don't know.
Okay.
I think they're leaving that up to the director.
Okay.
I would imagine yes, but I don't have an answer one way or the other.
Sounds good. Any other questions for Dan? Okay, we'll move on to the trustee library use report. Mary Bell, would you like to start?
Yes. I get confused of like what month we're, we're speaking on. Cause I think last month I reported on going to the Dos Amigos concert series, which I think is more aligned with this, this meeting time. But that was really great. And I think there's another one coming this weekend that I'm going to try to go to. So I really enjoyed those. I did make my way up to Temecula, to the library that they had up there. And it just kind of, so one thing that's been on my mind, which, you know, I'm still processing. This is the second library where I see more of like the pioneer, what we would have Pioneer Room. That's more kind of in the back end of the house or on the second floor, if there is a second floor. And again, this is another library that I've seen that has the children's area more accessible, kind of more in the front and in the beginning. Whereas we have it more in the back end of the house upstairs. So it's just kind of helped, for me, it's a very interesting difference that we have. And the, the displays that they have for the children's area seems a bit more inviting to me from, from a child's perspective, right? And the fact that it's just kind of so present, you walk in and it's right there.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Was that the building, the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library up on the hill?
I want to say yes.
If it was, that's the one I used to work at before I came to Escondido. So I know exactly the library you're talking about. I think so. The big, it had like a storytime balloon.
mural.
Yes, yeah.
Walk in, it's got like a hot balloon. Yep, that one.
Yeah, it's a, it's a gorgeous library.
It's a gorgeous library, but I was looking more about like just the layout of how we have the children's area. It's kind of very, very present. And so just, just trying to, for me, just trying to see how we can get, you know, younger families into the library. So that's just a little bit of food for thought for everyone.
Yeah, I'm, I, I think everybody recognizes that if we could have the Pioneer Room over in the library versus where it is, it'd be much easier on staff as far as staffing it. You could have one person in there instead of two if you didn't need it because there's all kinds of people around there versus over there by themselves. So it would, it would really help out, but I, I don't, I personally don't see how that works because of space constraints. I don't know. But it's a hell of a good idea to have it here if we could find some way to do that, but I have no idea what that is. Uh, nothing really. I'm, I'm going back into electronic books where I was reading mostly papers. So I just checked out three, uh, three books on Libby. Reading them out of my cellphone. Uh, it's, it's nice to have all the, the options.
I'm, I'm going to sneak a question in for you. Are we planning to be present at the Grand Avenue Festival this weekend?
We are not. Traditionally it takes place on Sundays and because of the hours we open and scheduling with staffing, it just hasn't been feasible. And just in my experience, the return on investment going to it has not paid off in patron numbers or anything like that.
Okay.
So that just over the last few years, but it's certainly something we can always revisit in the future to attend.
Okay, just curious.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then also I was having a conversation with a little eight-year-old boy and his favorite library is a Forest Ranch library because they have a 3D printer. And it hurt my feelings.
Is Forest Ranch, that city or county?
That I believe is a county library off the top of my head.
We'll add that Reno seems to be at the forefront of a lot of, you know, new technology. So I think that's definitely something that we can explore.
Please do.
There was a 3D printer, correct?
There was a 3D printer and then the staff that maintained it left and then the pandemic hit and the machine broke.
Okay.
So we haven't been able to really get it fixed since then. So we've been kind of recovering from all the repercussions of the pandemic. I know for a time it was working great and we had headed out in front and people could put orders and things like that. And then, hey, we got to close. So we lost the momentum.
So that's been like three years or something, right?
Uh, yeah, off the top of my head, something like that. I think we reopened in 2021, off the top of my head, somewhere in there, late, middle. I can't remember exactly the timeframe.
I wonder technology wise, if it's even worth fixing at this point.
The one we have, absolutely not. It's, it's not a good one. If we were to do it, I would recommend getting a newer one. The technology has become a lot more budget friendly, I would say. So I think there's some options there.
Okay. Just dropping little seeds.
It's always good to hear. I appreciate it.
That one was more or less a gift from LSNS.
Oh, okay. I see.
They probably upgraded and got rid of their old one.
Do you know, Dan, if LSNS other libraries are like high-end technology?
Some are, some aren't. I think it just depends upon the location of the, John, not to correct you, but we got the 3D printer through a grant through the state of the library, through the state library.
They came in, they promised they were going to bring a 3D printer.
Yes, we got it through a grant.
Huh, okay.
That's all I know on my.
No, good, good to know. I, I, I was misinformed.
Oh yeah, no, sorry for the misinformation on that. But we were able to get two and then some VR technology as well. But I think that's how they figured out how to get it. But if we were to purchase one, we could certainly have the funds for it. But I know that Reno's location is very technologically heavily. I think La Quinta out in the desert is also very technological. It just, it depends on location, depends on the facilities. A lot of things go into it. So it just kind of depends.
Okay, thank you.
Cool, cool. I live within walking distance of libraries, so I'm constantly walking, always impressed that there's foot traffic and people coming in and out of the area. And one of the things I recently volunteered in addition to this was to volunteer to run the old Escondido Historic District Instagram and Facebook accounts. So I've been actively looking for events that are shared through the library to share with that community since it's such a walkable space. So I would say every time you post something, there's people out there that are interested in reposting it. So just wanted to throw that out there.
We appreciate that. The walking tours that John Archer has done for the adult services programming for the historical walk has been very well attended. We're usually averaging about 25, 30 people that are interested in taking the mile walking tour that we do quarterly. So thank you for sharing the information on that too.
Yeah, no problem. And I think the total, there's maybe a couple thousand people connected to it. I don't know how many are still in the old Escondido area, but there's definitely reach there. And yeah, I'm just always on the lookout for any events that could connect back to families or services for adults that can be useful for the library, help them reach more people.
Much appreciated.
That's all for me.
Thank you, everyone. We can close the meeting.